Tonight, it's always nice to take a moment when we're welcoming a new member to the board. Tiana Amat, welcome. We need to sign or give you the oath of office. Kim, can you take it away?
That's right. Hi, welcome. So I'm just gonna give you the oath of office.
Oh, is that it? Good?
Okay, go.
All right.
I will read the entire thing and then you just tell me if you have, like, I do.
Okay.
I do solemnly swear that I will, as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Southwest Ohio Regional Transit Authority, support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that I will honestly, faithfully, and partially perform the duties of my office, that I will not be personally interested directly or indirectly in any contract let by, set by the Regional Transit Authority, that I will not violate or knowingly permit to be violated any of the statutes of this state covering the operation of the Transit Authority, and that I will perform, perform the duties of my office to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Again, welcome. And you've come on a night with many things to do. And you're a full board member, so ask any questions and let's have a good conversation as we work through these items. But would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Jim. I'd just like to say thank you. I'm excited to be a part of this wonderful board and all the innovation that's come out of Sora and just glad to be a part of our board. Thank you.
Welcome. So we, of course, always start with hearings from citizens. On my list, I have Kevin Shaw. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kevin Shaw, Park and Policy Board of Office. I just am a casual watcher of these board meetings and I just wanted to talk, kind of talk a little bit about what I think because it's on the agenda. I don't even take Red Bike regularly, but I just wanted to kind of draw comparison for the board members just after some of the conversations that I heard last week. I was a little disappointed by it. I noticed that Red Bike's, you know, I know it's on the agenda, it's potentially applied operations for similar, but park and rides have never gotten any level of scrutiny as far as contracts, as far as I can tell from you all. Right now, we're in a quality year contract to pay about $50,000 a year for those spots at Kings Island, which I just feel like that's never been questioned with the level of scrutiny that I heard. A lot, a lot of criticism of quote-unquote failed programming similar to last meeting. So just, I wanted to just draw attention to that, that I do feel like there's a lot more ability to scale Red Bike with first and last mile ridership, as well as just the efficiencies of bike storage versus car storage, again, whether that's transit centers, whether that's just building within our community. And a lot of those routes will be local trips, whereas the express routes, park and rides, aren't particularly more expensive provider, as everybody more aware of. And that also requires the person to own their car just to get that spot or get dropped off by someone who owns their car. We kind of do know that Metro's core function isn't, is, they not be biased, right? But our core function is also not roller coasters and it's also not car parking. So I think there is some leeway in the sense of that, that we recognize that people need access to opportunities, need to get to different places. I was really disappointed. Other than my Red Bike. So it is filling gaps in the service network. I do feel like there are other places such as Spale, such as parts of the central business district where I live, that are just, people have to get to in that first last mile for those who don't have it or visiting the city. I think that has a lot of merit. And I just want to make a general comment. I mean, I watch these meetings. I mean, I don't know how many people do, but just, I want to hear more about, you know, how you're serving the public interest of a public transit company. You are board members for this. I trust your judgment. You guys will make informed decisions about Red Bike. And I won't be offended either way, but I just, I hear a lot about my, my private business, this deal, that deal. And I, it is just different and I, I want to emphasize that, I don't know, this is not a political, like, it's a politically important board and I understand that, but it just gets frustrating consistently. Your only comparisons to the project field, when I fundamentally believe that public transit is different. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. May I figure out for all the discussion, but I will watch it later. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. I really appreciate you watching all the meetings and coming with commentary today. Thank you very much. And I have also noted that you said that we can't get to Eden Park on the weekends. So I'm gonna have staff to follow up on that and look at opportunities in addition to the Red Bike comments. So thank you very much. I was the only person who signed up to speak, but I was gonna see if Frank Harper might want to take the podium and, and address anything.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Everybody who might not know, my name is Frank Harper. I'm the president and business agent of Automated TransUnion of 627, where we are the exclusive bargaining unit for all of our bargaining unit members here at Metro. Here tonight to watch you guys go in the contract for our access division. Drivers and dispatchers and call centers and mechanics on the access side voted in last night. First, I want to say, as a leader, sometimes you have to delegate things to get people ready for their next step into leadership. So I need James Henderson to stand up. He's our vice president. James actually led negotiation for access. I don't know, as any other president in the 627, step off to the side to let your vice president lead in negotiations, but that's what leadership is all about. Inga, please stand up, Inga. She's our-
Our financial secretary. Inga has done so much to support us in this process, getting James ready, getting me ready. Just to be able to come down here today, she had to make sure that I left out on time. And then Chuck Hurd, come on, stand up, Chuck. Chuck is our recording, our recording secretary. So if he's somewhere, he's recording stuff, as we would say. But again, thank you for the opportunity to stand before this great board, this great organization, to stand for this great organization of 627. Some of y'all might not know, I have over 29 years here at Metro. So I've been here because I love this, I love this company, I love this union, I love this city, I love Southwest Ohio, I love Hamilton County. This is the only place I lived my whole life. So just, I can keep on talking, y'all. Wait a minute, I don't have no, Inga said I gotta go. Sit down. All right, y'all.
Thank you very much. Any other buddy who did not sign up to speak? Okay. So I have a moment for a few notes, updates, and then we'll move right into action items. And I think what Mr. Harper was just speaking about is, is big news. The vote last night was very favorable. I think it was 48, 410 opposed for the union agreement, which is, shows strong support. I think that, I understand staff has strong support. And I'm, I'm really just humbled and amazed by the culture collaboration that I see going on here. And I understand that this agreement is, is moving Metro forward as well. It is increasing the starting wage significantly so as to attract excellent drivers. We already have excellent drivers, but attract more. And also giving some progression, or the right word would be pay increases over the next few years that will help retain our operators, which serves the organization in so many amazing ways. So I think that's great. There's also some service improvements that come out of this. And I understand it's three-plus years before the next agreement. So that's great. There will be some retro pay as well as part of this agreement, which I hope the operators enjoy. And they should be getting it soon next year. So really just amazing work, everybody that was involved. On the staff side, I think John Rivasio started it, Bill Sprawl finished it out, and James? James' last name?
Hubbard.
James Hubbard, I'm so sorry. I know you have James, has led all the way through that. And of course, Adrian is involved in so much. So thank you, everybody that was involved. I know we have to move on to a vote here in just a moment. Actually, I think we'll, we'll just focus on that for comments tonight and move right into all these other elements we have to talk about. So first, the approval of the minutes. Anybody have any questions, concerns? I had a, I'm gonna go back just a moment. I forgot the one, the one other point I was gonna talk about. We had APTA in town last week. That's why we're doing so many of these items in a full board meeting. And that was a spectacular event as well. Not only just the, the retrospective on our levy, the work that went into it, the work that's happened afterwards and bringing all the people together to talk about it. Multiple mayors showed up to, to speak. I'd learned so much at that event. And then we had a reception in the evening with transit agencies from across the country, their leadership, their boards. The, the conference was specifically about transit levies. And so it's clear that APTA wanted to have it here because of what was achieved in Cincinnati. And that was great. But then I was, I was touched by this moment. The VP of APTA is walking out of the museum center on a beautiful night and he looked at the city. He'd been talking with people from here all day. And he, he was just taken by the city. He wants to come back. He wants to bring people back here. He was amazed by everything we're doing and he, he couldn't stop talking about how great this region is and so how impressed he was. So that's great. Many other board members from across the country were the same. So that was a real success and a summary of our successes and where we're going, which we'll hear a little bit more about here in just a few minutes. Okay, so now, back to the minutes. I know everybody wants to talk about the minutes. Any adjustments, questions, concerns?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
As written.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say left. Any abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved. So we have a few briefing items. Transit in Hamilton County, the New Horizon. Of course, our financial results. And then Metro on the move. Halen, would you like to take us through the future?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start if you guys don't mind.
Yeah, let me just start the presentation. Give me a second here. All right. Thank you. All right.
More than a decade ago, the Sora Board, the leadership in the community, had a vision of what transit could be in this region. That vision took time to bring to fruition. In 2020, we passed a levy so we could begin bringing that vision to life. We're through three phases of that vision right now. But one of the things that we understand is, an organization is either progressing or it's moving backwards. So what we know we can't do is we can't wait until reinventing Metro is done before we really understand what our next move is, what is the next vision for transit and for what this region is. So we've asked ourselves that question and we're really lucky to have Halen here, who is a visionary. So I challenged him with, what's next after reinventing Metro? Now, we've got a couple more years ahead to finish reinventing Metro, but we don't want to wait until we finish till we really start looking at the future. So we're gonna talk a little bit about the past, we're gonna talk about the present, where we are today, and then I'm gonna turn him loose to talk about the future. So I talked about where we were. For 10 years, we're reducing our service, we're raising our fares, and we're losing ridership. We then passed a levy. And once we pass that levy in 2020, we began the work of reinventing Metro. More service, 24-hour service, more weekend service, a new mode of transportation, all of the upgrades that we've done. Next slide. The community has responded to what we've done so far. And again, we're only through three phases. We've only got two Metro Nows. We've got at least four more coming. We're starting BRT. Next slide. So we're building a system that really connects the region the way a region should be. So it doesn't matter where you live, where you work, where you worship, where you go to the doctor or the grocery store, between Bus Rapid Transit, our network, and Metro Now, you'll be able to connect anywhere in this region for all the things our region has to offer. So what does the future of transit look like? We spend a lot of time talking about Metro or reinventing Metro not just being about lines on a map. So what I'll ask you to do is take a minute, open your minds, and take a look at what the possibility of the next phase of what Metro has to offer. Halen?
Thank you. And good afternoon, everybody. So you've, you've heard from Daryl about the past, pre-levy, as well as post-levy, and all the, the work that this agency has done over the past three and a half years. Just an incredible list of achievements from covering every aspect of our business. And, you know, the last slide that you saw are projects, just as a reminder, projects that we're working on right now and will be, will continue to work on for the next couple of years, taking us into 2028. And as Daryl mentioned, you know, that includes, includes the BRT, fixing up our garages, our facilities, and finishing the reinventing Metro plan. So all of that is gonna keep us busy for at least the next couple of years, 2027, 2028 timeframe. But think about 2028. So we're there and we've completed the reinventing Metro plan. We've built the BRT, we've fixed our facilities and so on. And then what's next, right? So just looking ahead, and it's the infinite game player's mentality. And, you know, the infinite game player's mentality is all about staying ahead of the curve and making investments when you don't really need them. So you're always ready for any changes or anything that comes your way. And we need to keep moving the horizon. So we've, you know, again, by 2028, we will have finished the current horizon we have, which is reinventing Metro plan, building BRT, completing the Metro Now project. So then, once we get to 2028, we need to move that horizon. So what's, what's the next horizon for us as an agency and as a region as well? So beyond 2028, we'll start looking at regionalism, innovation, as well as monitoring of everything that we've completed and are implementing. So that will be the, the main focus. In terms of regionalism, we'll continue to work with our regional partners, Tank, Butler County, Clermont, Oran, and other players, to really create this well-connected region, whether it's fixed route or otherwise. There's a lot of potential. We've already done a study, working with our partners a year and a half ago. And we are positioned, you know, in a, you know, to, to start working on this in a couple of years or so once we have reinventing Metro plan in place and, you know, build that regional, well-connected system. But beyond that, we also need to really start to understand the residents, the people, our potential riders. Planning and transit service is not gonna be the same moving forward. You know, historically, you just plan routes where you have densities and, you know, certain type of, you know, individuals based on income, number of cars, level of education, et cetera, et cetera. But things are changing and we need to really keep, you know, follow that. So we need to be more user-centric oriented agency, meaning we need to really do our research and we have to get into real research to understand the public. So a couple of quick examples is the elderly. It used to be, until recently, people get old and then they move to either, you know, some senior community or some, you know, homes and they're living in a community basically. So it's easy to provide service to them. You know, a vehicle's going to a center, you know, a particular place, collecting several individuals and take them to church or to the library and so on. But that's not the case anymore. People are aging in place. So they're spread all over town. How are we gonna cope with that in terms of providing the right mobility for that, you know, population? So we need to understand that. We need to understand their needs, their preferences, and, and their limitations as well. So we can provide that level of mobility for everybody in our region. Same thing with Gen Z. You know, we, I guess, most of us in this room, you know, when we were teenagers, we were dreaming of buying a car, driving, getting, you know, driver's license, and then as we get a little bit older, to buy our own homes, you know, hopefully in the, in the suburb areas. All of that's changing, as, as we all know. Gen Z, they want to live what the action is. That's in the central city where we have densities, right? They don't want to own a car. They're not interested in that. They want to invest in their own technology. Don't mind sharing a car with strangers, such as an Uber or other vehicles. And so we need to understand that. We need to understand their, their needs and, you know, the needs of the future generation as well, so we can provide the, the right mobility for every, all of them. And this is just an example slide that, you know, there is a research behind all of that. There's tons of literature and research and we need to educate ourselves. We're not just gonna be focusing on existing customers, but also new customers. But we also need to understand our existing customers because their needs and preferences will be changing, you know, over the next few years. So we don't want to lose them. We want to keep them, but at the same time, gain new passengers. So there's a whole lot to, to, to be investigated and researched and we need to invest as an organization in, in that as we hire additional staff. The other big piece is the innovation, right? I mean, we're all living, you know, in the 21st century and, you know, things are changing yearly. And that's, that's, it's there. It's gonna continue growing. It's gonna continue to impact us on a daily, daily basis. And the impact's gonna get, you know, it's gonna grow with, with time. And we're gonna go over some of these examples. So in terms of innovation, our transit centers, moving forward, will not just be your typical transit center, a platform for buses to stop there and people to get on and off and transfer to another bus. We need to be pursuing more smart mobility hubs. So it's not just about buses. It's about everything related to mobility. Provide access to shared biking, even shared cars like Zipcar. I live in Westchester and I'll take the bus, knowing that during lunch, I have a meeting. I can get a Zipcar and get, drive to my meeting, you know, 10 minutes from my work and then bring it back to the bus station, right, or bus transit center. That's, that's an advance, that's, that's an incentive for me to use public transit. But, you know, in addition to providing other facilities for EV charging, you know, electric vehicle charging, park and rides and so on, but we also need to incorporate other facilities and other amenities, such as, you know, maybe laundry pickup and drop-off, right? So you know, you know, you're, you're going to the bus stop and you just drop off your laundry there, pick it up on your way back or the next day. Same thing with Amazon, packaging, you know, drop-off and pickup. So it, the transit center becomes, it's not just about hopping on a bus or making, you know, a ride or a connection, but it is providing services to, to the community as well. And also incorporate other services, such as maybe daycare, office space that we can rent as well. The picture on top, in my previous life, I started my career at Cota in Columbus, Ohio, and that's the transit center we built in Linden back in 1999, 2000. And the lower, the first floor is a daycare, 24-hour daycare center. It's still operational. So it's a major success and people like it. So you can, you know, you have kids. You don't have to worry about dragging them to different places and transferring. Go to the transit center, drop them off, hop on the bus and on your way to, to work. So the, the transit centers will become more of smart mobility hubs. Also, technology, there's quite a bit of technology out there that we can take advantage of and there's still more coming in the next few years. You know, there's tons of research, especially from FTA as well, such as the NEXT project. But this is an example of where this app can help with walking directions, right?
Whenever I'm in a new city, it's really important that I feel confident and safe while exploring.
But even at transit centers-
Moving around a new place can be a daunting experience-
We'll guide you to which bus to take, what platform to stand, to stand at.
... when Wi-Fi and GPS let you down. That's where Waymap comes in. Waymap uses breakthrough technology that provides a highly reliable navigation experience without having to rely on GPS, Wi-Fi, or mobile data. Instead, Waymap uses motion sensors already in your smartphone. While there are many navigation tools out there, they don't work for everyone and they don't work inside for anyone. Have you ever wondered how to transfer lines on the metro? Or if your train is leaving from the platform you're on or the one above? Well, Waymap is there to guide you each step of the way. It's as simple as setting your start point, choosing where you want to get to, and clicking go. Waymap provides you a ton of options to choose from, so you can pick the mode of transit and style of instruction that work for you. It's customizable. It works for anyone, anywhere. Take Waymap with you on your next adventure and get to know a city like never before.
So the advantage of such an app is, you know, goes beyond providing this service to those who may be visually impaired, but even visitors to our city coming to the convention center or other visitors who may not be familiar with the city or our transit system. It tells them, you know, step by step, you know, at what platform to, to, to stand and, you know, to step to, take two steps to hop, you know, on the bus and, and so on. So that's a great tool. But this is just one example of, of many that we can utilize. One of the, I think, critical things for us as an agency, as a transit agency, is we need to become a mobility integrator. Not, not only a mobility manager, but mobility integrator. So with time, we want to be the go-to source for any mobility need, any transportation need in our region. So if somebody is trying, you know, to make a trip from anywhere to anywhere, the first thing we want them to, you know, to come to their mind is, oh, I need to go to the Metro website or I need to go, you know, ask Metro how to complete that trip. Even to the point of, I'm at home and I'm planning a trip to Paris, France, right? The first thing that needs to come to my mind is, I'll go to Metro's website and I can do all my booking there. I just say, you know, I live here, I want to go to Paris on the 17th of February or whatever, and the, the app will, you know, provide me with a complete itinerary and tickets for my bus from here to the airport or the Uber ride, airfare- and tickets for my bus from here to the airport or the Uber ride, airfare. I get to the, you know, airport in Paris and, you know, I have my taxi already booked or my four-day pass to 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 use the transit system there and so on. It's not that we have to create these apps. These, you know, these apps exist, but it could be connected to Expedia, for example, Booking.com or whatever it is. Because right now, I'm sure you've noticed many of the Gen Z individuals, they're always glued to their phones. Anything they want to do is on their phone, right? Any booking, any, you know, anything they want to search is on their phone. And, you know, again, that's, that's the future is if for any mobility need. And it doesn't have to be to, you know, across the 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 ocean, but, you know, long trip, just go to one one site and plan your entire trip. But we want to become that mobility integrator, that we are providing all answers to all mobility needs within our region and beyond. And as a complement to that would be a mobility store. Not, you know, not so much like AAA in the in the old days, but this is the modern mobility store. Again, a good example would be, you know, an office downtown, convention center, right? People come here for for the convention center. They need information how to get around. That's, that's a good stop to to go to and get their information. But also to answer any mobility-related question in our entire region and and beyond. And there are a few of these examples in in Europe and elsewhere. So it's not, you know, it's not science fiction. It's, it's a reality that people take advantage of. The next thing we also need to invest in is expanding our fare payment system. Right now, we have, you know, a good fare payment system, electronic fare payment system. We, but we need to expand that. So we're, you know, accepting more different media for payment, credit cards, you know, these smart bracelets. We want to make sure that we're penetrating, you know, all the different markets and provide more outlets to to get access to our fare. So for example, right now, for the electronic fare payment, you need to have a smartphone and a connection, right? Cellular connection to be able to buy tickets on on the app. But we know that there's a good percentage of our riders who either don't have smartphones or don't have cellular connection or may not be banked or they're underbanked. So there are outlets within our region. You know, Cincinnati, that's a map of the different locations. Each blue spot actually is more than one location, but they're aggregated into a single dot. That these already exist and they have, you know, relationship with our electronic payment provider, Masabi, where individuals can actually go there and through a smart card, they can buy a monthly pass or add money on their smart card so they can ride our system without the need for having a credit card or smartphone and so on. But that's something that's available to us. We haven't executed that yet. We're, we're waiting to finish another critical step with our fare payment, but probably the next, sometime in 2025, we'll take advantage of that. But the the importance of that is really, it provides more access to our, not only fare payment, but more importantly, to our service and our bus system. So more people can ride our system. Autonomous vehicles and mobility is is already here. It is the way of the future. Definitely, that's not something that we'll be utilizing to replace our big buses, our fixed route. These will have, you know, very limited application, probably in certain areas such as a campus area, maybe in the uptown area as well. That's kind of like the innovation corridor. So, but the, the, it is there. Technology is there. Right now, most of the applications are kind of what we call Level 4, where the car is fully autonomous, but there's an attendant onboard just to take control in case the car gets stuck, cannot make a decision on its own. Level 5, you don't need an attendant onboard the vehicle, but it's monitored remotely. So if it gets stuck in a sticky situation, somebody, you know, at some location will interfere and give it order to make a right turn or proceed or or not to proceed. Few weeks ago, Steve Anderson, my senior director, and I visited Main Mobility in the state up north. I made sure to wear my Buckeye tie. And we did experience one of those rides. So this is, we, we, we drove about 20 minutes in that vehicle. You're only gonna see a minute and a half of that. But that was an incredible experience. So this is, it's a minivan and fully autonomous, as you can see.
So you had this experience, Hillel, and you felt like Level Zero was was fitting after this experience.
Yeah.
That's extreme.
The, the drive was extremely smooth. The turns were extremely smooth. It approached, you know, red lights. It stopped, recognizes red light, even yellow light and slowed down and stops. You're gonna see it now, it's giving, you know, turning. It's gonna turn to the right, give the signal and avoided the cars parked there. And as I said, I mean, we, we were in that car for about 20 minutes, all kinds of roads. We did not get on this interstate, but we got on highways, neighborhoods, streets. But. But yeah, really incredible experience. So the technology is really there. And, but that's something we need to, you know, probably the next few years to start investigating and applying it in a very limited application in in certain areas where it would really, it makes sense. The, in terms of smart roads, again, that's really not our function as a transit agency, but we will, we will, we will be part of that. You know, it's the city, the county, as well as all that will be investing millions in smart roads. And really what that is, you know, cars will be talking to wayside equipment, getting information about the current traffic situation or about blind spots or whatever else, you know, vehicles coming the wrong way or, you know, pedestrians that may, their view may be blocked. But also, you know, merging, again, to make the whole thing safer for 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 the passengers as well as the drivers. You know, that extends to commercial vehicles, trucking. Again, trucks are talking to each other to reduce the spacing between them. So we have more vehicles on the road in a safer way, exchanging all kinds of information. Again, you know, when emergency vehicles are approaching, cars are notified so they can slow or stop to avoid collision and to make it, you know, easier on these vehicles to get to their destination. Again, cars talking to each other. So really, there's, there's tons of, of these systems that are being deployed or will be deployed in our region and across the the country. And we will be part of that. The other really piece of that is also, once we have electric, you know, buses and charging, there are systems out there that will automate the process of charging vehicles so that all buses get charged, no, no bus will be missed. They'll be charged to their fullest, again, so buses can leave the garage fully charged. I'm just gonna, oops, right there. Fully automated system. Again, the whole point is it ensures every bus gets charged to its fullest and, you know, the fleet is ready for the next service. Customer as well. All right, so in addition to that, you know, it's more innovation in in which we have to get ourselves, you know, busy with is AI, right? I mean, again, that's the talk of the town for the past couple of years and it's gonna continue to grow. And it is becoming part of, you know, every business out there, including transit. But we need to make these investments and not necessarily financial investment, but in terms of the resources, the development of the staff and the hiring and so on, to use AI in network planning. So we have better network, more efficient, reduces the cost as well. Bus-only lane enforcement, especially once we have the BRT and we need to implement these. So, you know, no other vehicles are impeding the movement of our BRT vehicles. In terms of operations, AI can help in absenteeism predictions. So again, we have, we can ensure that we have enough drivers at hand to deliver the service needed. Use AI to reduce breakdowns, you know, look at trends, make decisions and so on. But also help us in monitoring. We, you know, as you, as you know, we've been implementing Reinventing Metro Plan, adding new routes, services, frequencies, et cetera, et cetera. And we're gonna continue doing that. But we also need to monitor all of this service. So if there is any, anything that's going out of whack on a daily basis, we need to find that immediately so we can react to it, whether, you know, on the short run or on the long term as well. So AI is gonna play a significant role in the monitoring of our service and our data. So that really takes us into digital twin. So we have tons of data. We're collecting tons and tons of data on a daily basis. And we are using, you know, quite a bit of it in pretty much everything that we do, whether it's the planning, operations, maintenance, marketing, you know, HR and so on in different ways. But it goes beyond just, you know, having the data and analyzing it. The next thing we need to to look into is also how to use this data to simulate things, simulate scenarios and to to make predictions. And hence the the term digital twin. So you have reality and you have the twin of the reality, which is the digital one. So that's digital twins. To use that data and, you know, to simulate scenarios. And if we want to make certain changes, whether it's the network or it is, you know, operationally related or, you know, whatever locating and, you know, a new transit center, we can simulate all of that so we can make better decisions. All right, so, you know, right now, we're doing the Reinventing Metro Plan. We're implementing that. We've got two more phases to complete. And, you know, we talked about the next step is really to look into the regionalism, innovation, monitoring, and that's beyond 2028. So what does really all that mean? I mean, are we doing all of this just for the sake of being regionalist, you know, regional system or just for the sake of implementing innovation? Really, all of this will take us into the smart city concept. That would be the ultimate goal. And we have to go through the these steps to get there. The smart city, as you all know, you know, it is, you know, some cities are implementing that concept, especially in Western Europe and some other Asian places. Some, you know, a few examples in in this country. It is to provide better living experiences for for the residents. As we know, more and more people are moving into the cities. So there's, you know, more and more strain on the resources. We want to make sure that everybody, you know, their quality of life is much better. We're improving the environment. We're providing better mobility options for everybody, connectivity and so on. So really, that's the the concept of smart cities. And these are the benefits. I'm not gonna really go over them. Most of them are pretty obvious. But it is, you know, it is about improving quality of life for everybody in that city. But it's also about providing, you know, data-driven decision-making from the technologies that are being deployed, you know, attracting investment and talent to to that particular city or region. So these are really the benefits of smart cities. And to get there, what defines a smart city is to have seamless mobility. That's the essence of it, really. And, you know, with with the right technologies, ITS, intelligent transportation systems, to have the right infrastructure, not just for transit, but for all modes of transportation and and beyond. Broadband is a critical component of that because of connectivity. None of these systems or the people, you know, would benefit from a smart city if they don't have the, you know, the connectivity. The broadband is is a critical role. Obviously, AI, data analytics, you know, to to keep improving things and doing simulations and building new things. It has, you know, provides resiliency for that city or that a particular agency and energy efficiency. And we're almost there, so a couple more minutes. And that's, that's really where it's leading to, right? To evolving into a smart city. It's about, you know, the foundation is the public transportation. That's the foundation of it. And then the next layer is to have the technology, the ITS, intelligent transportation systems. And then the next level is to implement smart mobility. And and the next slide will go about over, you know, these aspects. And then you can get to a smart city, our smart region in our case, where it's fully implemented and we can get to that particular goal. This is really a slide that I really love because it's, it's, it's a, it's a very optimistic one. If you look at that, you know, in terms of public transit, we're pretty much there. I mean, you know, especially in couple of years, once we have the rest of the Reinventing Metro Plan implemented, the last two phases. But we've implemented, you know, three out of the five phases. We've, you know, had quite a bit of service, 24-hour service, weekend and so on. In terms of public transit, we're, we're, we're almost there. And especially with, you know, give us a couple more years, we'll have finished the the RIM. The next layer, ITS, we have made the right investments in technology over the past few years. There's still a couple of systems that we will need to upgrade, probably the next year or two. But pretty much we have what we need in terms of ITS. And that includes the CAD AVL, the advanced scheduling system that we have, the cameras onboard the the buses, the electronic payment systems, the APCs and so on. So we have that entire ITS package right now. And we are taking advantage of these systems in terms of data, information and so on. The next level, the smart mobility, we're halfway there. We've started implementing Metro now and that's an aspect of smart mobility, right? It's the first last mile service and we're expanding, you know, the the zones. We do have, you know, the smart apps, you know, as as a service. We are very close, probably the next two to three months, we'll be implementing the regional one-call, one-seat service in our region. And then a couple of other things that we need to implement over the next few years beyond 2028 is the autonomous vehicle solutions as well as become the mobility integrator of of the region. And once we have those, really, the, the, we get to the smart city region and we're there. Now, those elements of the smart city, they're not our responsibility as a transit agency. Those really fall on the city, the county, the all that. But we will be part of that effort. It's unfortunate that other cities try to implement smart city going from top to bottom, right? So they come up with the concept that, yeah, we need to pursue a smart city and they start making investments, you know, starting from the from the top. And my personal opinion is that's why many of them failed, at least in this country. We, we've been doing it unintentionally, maybe, the right way. So we start from the bottom up. So we have a pretty good resilient transit system and it's, it's, it's growing. We have the the ITS and we're building our smart mobility before we get to a smart city. If you look at other countries such as in Europe, they've done a much better job in terms of implementing smart cities. And one of the main reasons is because they have a pretty good transit systems. I mean, that's really the foundation. That's really the 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 basics of it. And before I finish, again, remember, it's all about the infinite game, which is keep moving the horizon and make the investments when you don't really need them. But we need to make them. So when we get to that point, we, we are, we have what we need to keep moving. And this is just a funny slide. When I did this initially, came up with these, they spilled RIM 2 for some reason. But, so we're gonna go from RIM to RIM. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alain. It sounds like we have a, maybe a comment or two, although I think the discussion is probably going to be going on for years.
I just, obviously this is my, this is my happy place as a STEM company owner. And we've got a group of middle schoolers at Horizon Science in Dayton that are, they've come up with, they've come up with a future city called Element City for the Maldives because of the population that is expected there. And some of these elements are in their, in their project. And so they'll be competing in Columbus in January. That's a plug. But I'm just, but it, but it's really nice to see that it's happening in real time. And I absolutely can't wait to go back to them at their next meeting and say, look, by the way, some of these elements are actually happening. And so when we look at the future and sustainability and what the investment looks like leading up to it, it is really, really critical, both from like a, you know, kind of a macro position, so to speak, as this is like regional, even down to a city perspective. A lot of this is going to make the difference between where people end up residing and the, the strain on those resources, resources that you talk about. And putting our, we're, we're positioning ourselves at a, at a such a great place, both fiscally and even just with quality of life. And so I'm, I'm just really excited for the, for the work that you have done on that.
Just quick question, if I can get this to work. So like, how does this match up to the goals of the city and the county? Like if we, like if I sat down with them, would, would this all match and come together? Or are we going down different, different lanes?
So to, to answer that question, before we sat down with the city and the county, and okay, we wanted to show this to our board first. To show the board what direction we're going in, because of course we take direction from our board of directors. Our next step is to sit down and have a conversation with the city and have a conversation with the county, have a conversation with OKI, to see where those synergies are and they have, how they match up. Because we want to be in the same boat, rowing in the same direction. But we wanted to show this to our board first.
And then, and then the goal would be, I guess the assumption is that you'll go back. I'm sure it's not going to line up perfectly and then come back with.
We'll all make adjustments.
Yeah.
Yes. That's what we expect to happen.
One thing I just want to put a pin in, my memory is terrible, so I will forget this later in the meeting. But I want to put a pin in this. Smart mobility hubs, transportation-related amenities include bike share, bike racks. Making an investment today towards those items that we have the option, opportunity to make an investment in today could pay off for us years in the future, when we've already made that investment. Putting a pin in that, I'll bet later.
Just chair question, just in terms of process. Cause I, I have some recollection of the development of the reinventing metro plan, what feels like an eternity ago. That's a really tactical, right? Like what we, we've created five phases of reinventing metro that was these lines here go to these places. This is obviously a precursor to that level of work in terms of sort of this is, this is vision and that's tactics. How do we plan to sort of have this board engaged in the tactics of, of that? Cause there are pieces of this that get me really excited. There are also pieces I have a hard time seeing, like how does that play out on our streets here in Cincinnati? And how does that fit in with some of these other things that are going on? So just curious sort of how, is this a ongoing planning and ops conversation? Like where, how do we, just what's the, what's the approach there?
So, so the vision here, the vision here is not what just we do. It's what we do as a region. So the first thing we have to do is we have to get partners onboard. So we wanted to show this to this board first. And then we start with the other partners with, you know, I mentioned them, OKI, the city, the county. There is a lot of federal money to create smart cities. And a lot of people in this country has, they have attempted to create smart cities, but they attempt to create them from here without all the individual aspects. So if we work as a community to make sure we're touching all of these different aspects, we could be successful in the creation of a smart city. So we'll start here. We'll then bring our partners in, have those conversations. And this will be an ongoing conversation with the board of directors of what steps we're making and where, and who those partners are that want to be a part of this. And as we begin to bring partners in, what it looks like. We believe there is a lot of federal and state money because this country has been trying to do smart cities for a while. We haven't figured out how to do it. We believe this is a much better approach.
And if I may add, it's not that we would be driving the smart city process. We know we are a player, we are a part of it, but there will be other entities, whether it's the city or whatever, however the region decides.
Driving that, you know, the, the process of getting to a smart city. But we want the expectations of driving that, we will be a component of it. And for the other elements to, to, I agree with that.
I guess I'm speaking with my mic off. Sorry. Okay. You know, it's, it's kind of anyway, similar to the BRT, right? I mean, the BRT is, is a project, you know, transit project that we are, you know, implementing, but we can do it on our own. So we have, you know, that's, that I mentioned, we have our partners with the city as well as with the county and other players. And many of these things that I talked about, we need those partners as well.
Thanks. That's helpful. I think the one piece of feedback I would give as I'm digesting this is that the, at its core, transit's competency is to move the densest number of people possible through the densest parts of a region. We obviously have tools that scale up and scale down on that density. But I, I would, I would encourage us to be really clear about the asset we are when it comes to mobility in an urban environment and the tools we have in a suburban environment. But I think that is really essential from where I sit, that we continue to be strong in, in that perspective.
And that's why this is a future look. This is not next year or a year after. But if we're not thinking about what's next, we'll start, we'll start moving backwards. We have to today, start thinking about what's next. Reinventing metro didn't happen in a year. It took a decade. And if we're not thinking about the future, we're moving backwards.
Thank you.
So there are ideas in here that we need to latch hold, latch on to and just consider what they mean and imagine them in discussions moving forward. Mobility integrator, what does that mean? I could probably talk for the next two hours and I would really enjoy it about that. But maybe we save that for future discussions. But these are concepts that can shape discussions. And smart region, I'm going to stick on smart region, can emanate or unfold as these concepts are embraced, considered, discussed and applied to any project that's coming forward. So.
And also with the dollars, the federal dollars and things, this puts us on the ready and on the lookout for those things. Because sometimes we may just have to make some moves to, to pull those or try to acquire those dollars. And then that'll, that'll help push it along. Yeah.
And I'm trying to control myself, but it, it does all come back to the people that need mobility. That will engage with mobility, will be excited by mobility and will choose different types of mobility as part of their existence. And transit becomes a part of it for some people that it's not a part of today. I'll leave it at that. So thank you very much. We do have financial results. Getting back to very tangible, concrete numbers, a wall of numbers. That is Tim Walker's favorite thing. And then we will go to Metro on the move and then action items.
Thank you, Mr. Rethridge. It's hard to follow the innovation, to look in the rearview mirror and talk about our financial results. But I'll do my best here. We're going to start off on the first page there. Thank you, Natalie. I think everyone has a package that was sent out, so I'll go through this kind of briefly. I, you know, basically the main story this month was the sales tax shortfall. I think when you look at it from a, you know, all the other line items, other than the revenue is something that is, is in line and is very reasonable. Really no discussions there, but you know, sales tax really hit us in, and keep in mind, this is the August actuals that we hit in November. So it's an odd scenario there with the delay. And we missed the sales tax number for the month by, compared to our budget by about a million and a half dollars. And it was short by about a million one to, when you compare it to last year. The state of Ohio had a sales tax holiday this year that was, call it eight days, versus a Friday, Saturday, Sunday in previous years. So it's hard to tell what that impact was for that eight days versus the weekend, but it clearly did have an impact. And while we, you know, we had that shortfall compared to the budget, you know, I think if you, you know, X out the sales tax revenue shortfall compared to budget, we were actually $200,000 favorable for the month. So trying to shed some, some good light there on that.
Can you say that a slightly different way so I understand it?
So right now, our operating capital contribution for the month, we missed budget by a million three. We missed our top line revenue number by, call it a million five.
Got it.
And so even with, so we, we made up a little bit elsewhere, whether it be investment income, whether it be expenses. But really that was the, you know, that was the message there along, along those lines. All the other revenue items, we're either favorable, expenses were favorable or are close to in line. So the sales tax was the story. And as always, we have our eyes closely focused on that and we can adjust when we, when we see fit. Natalie, go to the next page. Last month, I think you, you heard me jumping up and down before the, the ridership group got a chance to shout, shout the numbers out. I'll do the same this month. You know, we, last month it was a million four, this month is a million one. You know, someone would say, well, that's not a great comparison. Well, a million one for the month of, of November was pretty good, considering October for metro, we had Blink. And November this year, you know, we had the election day, we had Veterans Day, we had Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. So, you know, a lot of headwinds there, but still a million one is a very significant ridership number. And when I started doing some math, because I do like my numbers, you know, if you compare that, the ridership that we had for this month compared to last year, this would have been the fourth highest ridership month all of last year. And we're trying to explain why we had a shortfall compared to last month. It's still good news. So I want to make sure, you know, frame it. We saw some good news here. Ridership was great. The rest of the wall of numbers, my favorite slide, just a lot of numbers there. You can see the big number variance is the, the county sales tax. And focusing on that for a second, you can see we're, we have a shortfall compared to our budget of $5.5 million. Focus down on the bottom line, even with that shortfall, we still have a year-to-date operating profit, our operating capital contribution, sorry about that, Darryl, of over $700,000. Very impressive considering the, the headwind we had with sales tax. So a great effort for all of metro for the, you know, most of 2024. And our goal is to, to see that operating capital contribution be a positive number for the year. And all indications are it will be a positive number for the year, which is great news for, for everyone here at Metro. And, and go to the, the last page. We're just going to go through the last page here, Natalie. This is, it shows we have the cash of $162 million in the bank. We do have the, the moving pieces in, in the middle to show everyone that while we do have significant cash, we have obligations. We have some commitments that we, we have coming forward. These are not all in '25. They could be in out years. But, you know, it's something that we, we keep a close eye on and this is how we're going to manage any shortfalls we have in the future. I want to thank everyone. Any questions from anyone? All right. Thank you, everyone. If there's, are any questions later on, feel free to reach out directly to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vazia.
All right. Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. We have a little bit of a, a different spin here in Metro on the move. We'll also bring a bit of a good news feel to it. You might've thought you were getting out of it by missing committee meetings, but nope. Captive audience and all that. Let's start with today's news, right? Local businesses were invited to join us for the 2024 Small Business Expo entitled Empowering Diverse Businesses and Building Stronger Community Partnership. Otherwise you could probably consider that our mission statement, right? Kudos to John Edmondson and team to continue to drive our diverse business partnership efforts. And thanks to everyone at the Cintas Center for letting us host there today, December 17th. John's in the crowd. Thank you, John and team. Attendees who brought toys to donate to children in need during the holidays were also entered to win a promotional bus wrap for their business. Updating the board as well on some organizational realignments to better position our teams for growth and success. We've had a few changes on the executive leadership team. I'm now in the chief of staff role, succeeding Andy Aiello. Andy now deputy general manager. We've also promoted Adrian Hairston to chief human resources officer and filling the chief operations officer role is Bill Sprawl. So congratulations to everybody on your new roles. The merry, merry Metro bus and holiday giveaways underway through December 29th. We've got two buses decked inside and out with holiday flair circulating through our system throughout the county. Lucky customers who board enjoy a festive and free ride as a way of Metro saying thank you to all of our customers and happy holidays. Customers can also win, they can enter our social media contest to win prizes such as tickets to the Cincinnati Zoo, the Kris Kendall Ice Rink and 30-day Metro passes. And also with the holiday spirit there, Santa Claus paid a visit to Metro and Government Square as well. He's made a special appearance at Government Square this week with members of the Metro team spreading holiday cheer and gifts that included sweets and free tickets, right? That's, that's about as good as a stocking stuffer as you're going to get. Continuing with the theme, we stuff the bus for those in need. We partnered with Radio One to stuff a bus full of non-perishable food items to donate to families in need during the holiday season. Our team helped collect items at various Kroger stores and were, these were donated to the Free Store Food Bank. On the BRT side of things, we continue to engage the community and update the board on that progress. A big thank you to more than 200 attendees, 200, who came out to our recent BRT public meetings that helped us determine the placement of stations, but really what this service looks like. Community engagement is vital and continues. We had meetings in Bond Hill, College Hill and the downtown library. Throw a number at you, Tim. I don't have a wall, but you'll like this number. Eight, eight. It's not the number of reindeer. Anybody have a guess? Or is it? I don't know. Maybe it is. Eight. Eight is, what's that? Eight stands for the number of consecutive months that Chief Marketing Communications Officer Brandy and/or team have made their way into the Good News for Awards. It is eight, Tim. I went back and looked. Tim thought it was seven. Eight consecutive months will make it nine in December. The communications and marketing team took home not one, but selfishly two awards of excellence during the PRSA Awards banquet for our 50th anniversary celebration and our promotions to strengthen DBE partnerships. Brandy, it's now nine months and running, no pressure for January. We've also updated city council. Earlier this month, we made presentations at city hall, updating council on our progress on delivering and reinventing metro service improvements. And we also continued discussions with city personnel and leaders at many level throughout the city administration regarding BRT. And lastly, Blake certainly hit on our success at the ballot, how fun it is to retell our story and retell the story of how we built our story around getting community engagement and support behind a county sales tax. We hosted the Aptabai Annual Ballot Initiative Conference, December 9th through 11th. Thank you to so many that participated, not only in making the event a success, but participating on panels and in discussions. Special thanks to Mayor Pureval, Pete Metz, Craig Cassie, John Cranley, Kim Schaefer and Taylor Liggins, who all spoke on panels, sharing our story and our journey to the successful ballot and probably most importantly, beyond delivering on the promises, the pledges of issue seven. Certainly those efforts and successes continue. Woo, made it.
Good job.
Metro on the move.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. All right. So let's move into action items. I'm going to bring these all forward as opposed to committee chairs because that is required that I move them forward since we didn't have committee meetings. So I just want to explain why my name's on there so much. I would prefer it otherwise. So, but I, I do chair the labor. chair the Labor Committee, and we have a vote to move forward with. And I would like Mr. Haley to make some comments before we go forward on the vote. And of course, we can have any discussion and questions before we move.
So our ATU leadership is here. So I'd like to ask you guys to stand up, if you would. And if you would, I'd like you to come forward so people can really see you You know, we talk a lot about reinventing Metro is about more than lines on a map. It's about a partnership. It's about a partnership with our community. It's about a partnership with our employees. It's about a partnership with this region. I just wanted to formally, out loud, on camera, say how much I love working with you guys. We have reinvented this organization, and your leadership, ATU's leadership, has made all the difference in the world to us being able to deliver the product that we're delivering. We are leading the nation in ridership recovery, and it's not because of the leadership sitting around the table. It is because of the work that you all do every single solitary day, and it's important. And I want to personally say thank you to each one of you for your partnership, for working to better this organization, to deliver something to our community that they, they deserve. I just want to say thank you. This has not been an easy road for us. We know that. But I want to say thank you.
For the record, John did make that observation to me as well. So did anybody have any questions before we move forward with a vote on this? Which is, we have to vote to approve it as well. The union has already voted last night.
I'll move approval.
Properly moved and seconded. I think we can move forward to a roll call vote on this.
Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
It passes. Great. All right. Now we have a number of items that would have fallen under planning and ops. I think there are six items here. Yes. And my understanding is that we can vote on these in one group. I'd like to take us through it for just a moment. Andy, John, did you want to? I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Oh, sure. In the matrix?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through each of these items. Driver protective barriers. We've talked about this before. It is important that we protect our operators. Safety has become more and more of an issue over the past several years. And this is to complete the retrofit of vehicles that were not manufactured with the barriers. You can see, it's $2 million. It is budgeted. We have been planning to do this, and it is important that we get it done. Number two, Walnut Hills Transit Center design. So you can see that's 20% local, 80% federal. This is a transit center in Walnut Hills, and we need to do all the design engineering work prior to the development of that. Fuel tank repairs. I'm sure you all read about this, that we were able to delay some of the fuel tank repairs that were necessary, I think in '21. But now we have to get them done, otherwise we would face some penalties, and it's the right thing to do to make sure that our fuel tank is safe and meeting all regulations. $406,000, again, budgeted. Non-revenue cargo vans. I think there's six of them. Three regular cargo vans, one larger one, and two medium. I'd have to get staff to go into more detail on that for 234. Replacements, they're replacements for existing vehicles. These are again, non-revenue vehicles, so that means that they're not providing transportation, but they're necessary to our service. General Counsel Legal Services, we do this every year, or most years. And, well, I think it speaks for itself. And then HASTAS trapeze migration upgrade. So we are moving to use HASTAS. This is one of the best, if not the best, system for the strategic innovation that Halle and his team do. And it has to be integrated with our existing trapeze system that we use every day. So this will enable some of the work that Halle was just talking about, but a lot of it is really the day-to-day efficiency that has driven so much of the success of this organization for years. And this will be, allow us to take it a little bit further. Would you say that's accurate? Okay, so those are the six items. Anybody want to discuss, ask questions? These are all, all touching on important parts of the service. There's a lot going on there. It's fine to ask questions.
I have a question. I know this came up last year when we approved the contract for legal services. Since we don't have to procure that, I mean, how off, how do we, how do we know that, you know, that's, this is a good deal for us? How long have we been doing this?
Right.
It just seems unusual to me. Like, some background.
Correct. So we get a engagement letter, essentially a negotiated offer from our law firm every year. And we compare that against other peers and costs, and we make sure that that is in line with the market to make sure we're not overpaying for those services. We also, as a public agency, do receive a discounted rate from those firms. And again, we work with multiple law firms, so we're very, we can very easily compare costs between those. So we make sure that we're, we're within a reasonable set. The dollar amount is a budgeted amount not to exceed, but we don't only bill based on actual work, right? So many years we'll come in under this. Some years, if there's a large case, and there's a lot of litigation, and there's a lot of, you know, back and forth, we might get close to or actually have to come back to the board to go over that number. But really, the, the, the letter is setting the rate at which they will be reimbursed, and we make sure that that's at a fair value. And the increase this year, we went for years with, without an increase. I think we had about a five, a four to five percent increase last year, and I think this year is in the same realm. I think it's between a five or six percent increase, which, given the market, is still well within scope of what we're seeing from the other firms.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. And then are there other areas that we don't need to put out to bid? Like, any other contracts that we don't? Like, you know, it says in here, no, not legal, just like anything else. I think it says Ohio Revised Code, says it, like, yeah, professional legal services. So, you know, when we put out to bid, like architecture, do we?
John can speak to what, what the Ohio Revised Code says about which, which services we can provide without competition.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sorry.
So with respect to professional services, the bucket of professional services includes legal representation, brokerages, if we had medical services of a doctor, physician, something like that, that we had to procure. Those are all within the realm of professional services, and professional services is one of those buckets that does not require competition due to the unique nature between the purchasing organization and the selling organization.
I assume, based on the, moving forward on the Walnut Hills Transit Center design work, that there's been some positive momentum on the procurement of the real estate? If I open a can of worms?
Not, not, not yet. We're in the, in the process. As you know, a couple of months ago, the, the board approved to move forward with Voris into the legal process and to appropriate filings and notifications toward the execution of eminent domain. And the petition has been filed by Voris, and a couple of days from now, December 19th, summons will be issued by the court to the property owners. And then they have about 28 days to respond, and then it's just going to be open to negotiations until we agree on a price and, you know, finalize the acquisition. So parallel to that, we'll be putting out the procurement for the design, just so that we don't lose time.
And I just, I don't have any experience doing this before. Is that pretty common with the way things are dealt with not waiting till the end of the process, like moving parallel with the process? Is that pretty common?
This is.
What's that?
Before a design team to come in, before, you gotta have a physical design of the project itself before they even do anything else. So I would say that's why they're gonna procure a design team before anything else is even done.
That's helpful to know. Thank you.
In the, in the event that the, that that acquisition doesn't necessarily go the way we would prefer, about how much, how much of this, this amount would we have as an outlay that we wouldn't, that, that, that's basically going to be gone, potentially?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm gonna put this out. But since we entered eminent domain, eventually, we will acquire it. We prefer to acquire it, you know, dealing with the owner and agreeing to, you know, to, to come to an agreement on a, on a, on a, on a price. But eventually, we, we will have, you know, the ownership of it.
I'd like to give that moment, just to see if anybody else has any other questions. They're always welcome. Hearing no more, I will move all six of these items at once. Do I have a second? Universally seconded, from my perspective. Roll call, please.
Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Next on the agenda is approval of Agency Executive Records Management Commission. If you read this item, it shows a, a few of the members of our leadership that will be forming a commission for, well, executive, or for records management, right?
Correct.
Is there anything to add to that?
Yeah, there's a little bit of context. This is a project that, that Natalie and John and I have been working on. It started about a year ago. As an state agent, or as a public agency in the state of Ohio, we have records retention rules and laws that we have to adhere to. Our current records management process was a little bit old and outdated, and so we wanted to update it, make sure we were in compliance with Ohio law. What it requires is first you to create an executive records commission. You can see the, the positions that we would suggest staffing that commission. We modeled this after best practice within the state. We looked at others who have this function. And essentially, we have done the groundwork to where every department within the organization has a list of all the types of records that they create. And then we've, we've put the appropriate retention schedule associated with every, every single one of those record types throughout the organization. Those record schedules would need to be approved by this commission. Any changes would need to be approved by this commission. And essentially, disposition of records have to occur in accordance with those schedules. So it's really just updating and housekeeping, making sure that we are compliant. Completely, a compliance issue requires this board to approve the commission.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if you were interested in delving down into records management. So Pete has moved approval. Is there a second? Chelsea has seconded all. Oh, roll call.
Ms. Amat?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
And Mr. Smith.
Next on the agenda is approval of Red Bike. Pete, would you like to take the lead on this?
Yeah. Thank you, Blake. Mr. Chair, whatever I'm supposed to call you.
Blake is fine.
Blake is fine.
Yeah.
Your kids call you Mr. Chair, I get to call you Blake. Couple, we held, as, as you all know, we held this item at our November meeting, after having a robust conversation in October. We held it in part thanks to the really hard work of staff and, and Kim to help us figure out sort of, we had a oral motion, and as we sat down and sort of think about how you effectuate, the, the sort of perspective that came out of committee, we had been talking about a procurement opportunity. It became clear to us that that approach was sort of fraught with peril as you went down the line of actually effectuating that. And so what is in front of us, and there are many reasons that, again, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not even gonna pretend to be a lawyer. You did a good job of that before. What is in front of us instead is a strategic, I, I think strategic marketing partnership that includes all of the same things we discussed and move forward with the same goals, as well as with the same stipulations about when we would approve, or when we would enter into this marketing partnership specifically related, and I'm looking here at the, the bottom of this, with the recommended board action, that it only be effective once Metro staff confirms the complete funding plan is in place, that the sponsorship agreement will only be effective after Metro staff receives confirmation that Red Bike has updated its governing structure. I'll, I'll just note on that one, that became really complex as you started thinking about public procurement, to be able to think about board structure and, and board engagement with also an agency that we would be procuring services from. And so that was a real driver of needing to transition to sort of this new model. And then that the sponsorship agreement would, would detail deliverables that are effectuate, that are, are part of the, the sort of goals listed above in, in the, the resolution. So wanted to help folks understand why the form of what we're seeing here is a little bit different than what we talked about in committee. The substance has not changed at all, and that was really based on good guidance from administration and staff to make sure that we were going about achieving the board's directive in the appropriate way from how they operationalize it. So Blake, I don't know if there's anything you would add to that from a process standpoint?
I will note that extensive amount of work has gone into preparing this motion and exploring the different possibilities. And in that work, the, the voice of the board in previous meetings has been incorporated by staff, by Pete, by me. So, you know, there, there's a lot of detail in here, and it's fine to go into it right now and discuss thoroughly. You know, I, I do want to echo Neil's comment, that you, you saw the, the bikes on those hubs, right? This is part of the vision of where we're going. And the thing that, that did sway me over to supporting this, not just that, but also the infrastructure that would build out over time connecting to our transit centers, and our BRT stops and other targeted stops. So that's, that's where I'm at on it. Mr. Simpson, Greg?
Yes. I was in Columbus today at a board meeting for the Racing Commission. Right in front of State Capitol, there was a bike there. This guy gets on a bike and runs over two people, flat, run over, knocked him into the street, okay? Now, we waited around, police came by, gave reports, so on and so forth. Before I came to this meeting, right in front of Jeff Ruby's, there's a guy, gets on a bike, kind of clumsy, knocks a guy backwards. I'm thinking, what's the responsibility? Who takes, if someone gets hurt, knocked into the street, run over, like in Columbus, they would run over, and he just kept going. What is the liability? Who's, if they, who, who's, where's responsibility? I mean, what happens? I mean, I would think the important that you know these things before you get this contract put together, which, you know, I'm just kind of curious about it. It doesn't address anything, I was reading this over, it doesn't address anything as far as liability on the user of the bike.
I can tell you, we will not be liable. This is a marketing contract. We have no liability.
We have none?
None.
Okay.
The way that this is, this is very similar to the investment that we made last year. If you recall, last year, we wanted to advertise our services, and you see the goal here is to promote the use of public tran- to promote the use of public transit. So the partnership is not dissimilar than a partnership that we have from a marketing perspective with like, say, the Cincinnati Reds, right? We invest in their marketing, they may show some signs in the outfield or on the screen in the fifth inning. In return, we may allow people that carry tickets to ride free on Sunday. That was one of the partnerships that we had. The goal is, is marketing to increase their customer base using our system and vice versa. So I think from a liability, I'm not an attorney, I defer to Kim on this, but essentially, the whole process and project is not for us to operate, to own, to maintain, or to make any decisions in terms of how the system is, is run. It is to try to use our resources to get more people using public transit, more of their customers using public transit. So, yeah, sure, understood. And we were very, very concerned about that as well.
When Blake says that there was extensive work done over the last two months, it was related to questions like this, to understand if we were to go through a process one way or another way, how do we make sure we're achieving the goals we want and limiting the things we, yeah, so.
So I know I missed the November meeting on this, and I appreciate the passion that's gone into it and all the work. I'm going to echo comments that I made previously, though, which are that I don't believe this is a core function of SORTA or buses. I do believe transportation is part of what we do, and we should be welcome and open to that, but a bus route, I'm sorry, a bike route is not. And while we are calling this an advertising and marketing expense, there were 10,000 rides last year, paying 1250 for each one of those rides to look at our brand is not a, like, we wouldn't do that on radio, we wouldn't do that on TV, we wouldn't do that on a billboard. I am still also not convinced that there is a plan to success. Like, I just, as much as we might wish it, I don't see the groundwork that this is going to work. I mean, we have scooters downtown, there's clearly a, a market. Is there enough density where they're putting their stations in? Like, I hope I'm wrong, and I'll go on the record as saying, I hope I'm wrong, because I think the board is going to do this. But I don't think that's borne out by any of the facts that we see today. And even though it's only $125,000 a year, like, that's a lot of money, and it adds up over time. And I think there are better things that we could put that to use. When we think of 27 rides a day, which is what 10,000 rides a year averages out to, if we had a, a route that only did 27 passengers, we would be thinking very seriously about, do we need this route? Or should we reallocate resources to where we would get more benefit for that money? So.
And I tend to agree with this. Red Bike doesn't have show profit at all, do they?
It's a nonprofit organization, 501(c)(3).
Yeah, but you've got to make something. I belong 503(c) also. We make money. Yeah, but I'm just saying, and I have no vote in this, but just from looking from the outside in, it seemed to me that, that there has to be a way, like this gentleman said next to me, you've got to show a way of, it's not making, it's not, it's not viable. I mean, you're giving $125,000 for what? To keep 27 rides a day going? That's it?
Just, just to be clear, it's 140,000 rides a year. So.
But I'm just saying.
An old figure.
Okay. But, like I said, I don't have a vote in it, but I've been in transportation my whole life, I was running a load from here to there, it didn't make any money or show any type of growths in it, I discontinued immediately. But it's up to you guys. Thank you.
What was the, what was the, when, when looking through the financials, what was the cash on hand? Was it around 67,000 for 2023 year end, or was it greater or less than?
For?
For Red Bike?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. Mr. McClintock's here if he wants to answer that.
This is Doug McClintock.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat that, the question?
Yes, Mr. McClintock. I was wondering, what was the cash on hand at the end of 2023?
I want to say it was somewhere in the 60, 70,000 dollar, pardon me. That was what was left over cash on hand at time to operate for through till the following year, which is why we look for funding in a number of different places.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
I just have a final comment real quick. I think that, first off, I am a tree hugger, as that's what they used to call it back in my day. And I think that, you know, certainly given our presentation that we had earlier, I, I'm very much looking for an integration. I think multimodal transportation is, is essential, especially in downtown. I'm not sure that this is necessarily the right time to do it, and I understand that it's repackaged or changed to be marketing, but I'm not sure that it demands, it demands that, that dollar amount either. There are a few things that, that obviously this is going to, we are moving, moving forward on this, but I do think that there are a few things that should be considered in, in this contract. One of which would be that the dollars that, that we outlay, that 125, that it be on a quarterly basis, and that it be contingent on the other participants and investors that are at least going to come in on that, should they pull out for any reason at any point in that, that annual process, that would also, you know, activate us to, to not, to not commit those dollars either. And then moving forward, making sure that all investors have, have already committed, and that those dollars are confirmed, that additional 375, the $375,000 are fully confirmed and earmarked, and that those folks are, are, are in the wings, so to speak, waiting to, to invest before we, before we would do that. And then, and then probably thirdly, if in the event that, that any, any of those investors pull out, that that also eliminates our continued investment, unless there is a plan and a new confirmed investor within a, a, a short time period. In echoing their concerns as well, I think, I think we're, that margin is really tight, even at 70, roughly seven, almost 70,000 with cash on hand at the end of '23. And so in terms of viability and sustainability purposes, it makes it, it makes it a little, it makes it uncomfortable, fiscally uncomfortable for me as a fiscal conservative, tree hugger and a fiscal conservative, that hey, that's, that's good, good mashup there. But those things are just, you know, a tad bit concerning, because we really want to make sure that it can, it can operate at basically an $800,000 level each year, and the requirement's going to even need to be, be more than that. I'm not sure that it's even, when we look at other programs like this nationally, it takes so much money. And I'm not sure that we're, we're going to, without having projections, financial projections on this and how that, those dollars will be used. I mean, now it's advertising, but of course, that goes, you know, that goes into a lot of, that's going, that's going to yield its way in other, in other infrastructure elements in, in a company. And so I'm not sure that it's, it's necessarily even the right amount for sustainability for three years. But I do like that there was a three-year ask with that, to try to get, to try to get some financial stability. So those are just, those are just my thoughts.
And thank you, thank you for the question.
One second, before you make your motion.
No, that's fine.
Sorry. My understanding out of this, a agreement would be drafted between Metro and Red Bike, so this isn't all of the agreements.
Yeah.
And I've heard pretty, heard, sorry, heard consistently, if Red Bike is not able to fund itself through other partners, Metro doesn't want to continue putting money in. Like, and, and so that could be covered in the wording of the agreement effectively, whether it's quarterly or.
Yeah, and I guess, so I think, I think pretty clear, so just sort of taking those three things, because I, I think the, all investors committed, we pretty clearly through this motion are making that we wouldn't enter into an agreement without that. I think the other, just important piece of context, as we've talked about this over the last couple of months, is that what we all have said is necessary to come from this, is that we are more involved in the operations from a governance perspective of this organization. And so from those other two items, I would suggest that we would be, we'd have our finger much more on the pulse of what's happening within the organization to understand if there is a, you know, so much of this was precipitated by a, a major sponsor pulling out, and a lot of folks who care about the system and believe it's important to our region, not having a clear sense of what that was, what was, what that was precipitating. And so I think to the extent that we are asked, and we should, we should want to have real governance leadership, that we would have a much better ability to drive what happens next after that, rather than just sort of waiting to find out, like, the money's not there, we need to pull our money too. So I think that is an important piece of this, and I think actually the way we've structured it allows us to have more say in that. I, I would defer to the two parties, the administration and the nonprofit, to figure out what the right timing to let funds is. I don't, I don't have enough sense of our cash flow, their cash flow, those types of things, but I, I think that's something I'm confident that the administration and Red Bike can handle. I don't know if that answers some of, some of the questions.
And I want to, I made a bad math calculation in my head.
I had to get a calculator out, so it's fine.
Yeah. And I just want to apologize for that, because I was wrong. 27 rides a day is 270, and that, there's a, there's a difference clearly in those numbers. I just dropped a zero when I was doing the math in my head, but I want to clarify, my number was wrong.
Appreciate that.
Pete, I have a question for you. So in October, when we last had a large discussion about this, we were first movers on this. Is that still the case, or have other organizations at least begun their own discussions?
In, in terms of formal action, I believe we still are. There have been productive conversations amongst members of city council about their investment. Councilmember Jeffries continues to lead in that way and has had nothing but positive engagement with his peers, as I'm to understand it. There have been really positive conversations with the folks in the philanthropic community. I do not know, just because I have not discussed this in a couple of weeks, what the status of those in terms of what's confirmed and what's not confirmed, but everything has continued on the positive path, I expected it to.
Okay, thanks.
I would, I would also add to that, there's been positive conversations related to sponsorship and marketing on the system more broadly than just us with a, with a partner to be able to really go sell the assets and drive revenue over and above what I think we are expecting, and try to maintain a level of conservative perspective on that, to not get into the position of having a one big sponsor pull out again and relying on that in the budget, so.
Sure, thanks.
Yep.
Pete, would you like to make your motion?
I'll move approval of the motion, of the item.
Properly moved and seconded, last chance for comments. Oh, Sarah, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm reluctant to speak because we've talked about it so much, and my position remains very supportive of this effort. And I just want to say that I want Cincinnati and our region to be a smart city in the future. I think this is directly related to what we do, and I think that it's worth this three-year investigative process support to see if we can integrate the two systems. And so I think it's very exciting. I think that the partners who have come to the table are committed, and I look forward to where this goes. So I'm, I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Bryce?
No.
Ms. Amott?
I'll abstain.
I'm now nervous about math, but I think it passes.
Passed.
Based on the counting, so.
Passed, eight yeses out of 11.
Great, eight out of 11 passes to no, one abstention. So thank you very much. I really, I know I've said this before, I welcome all this discussion, the different perspectives, the consideration that has gone into this over the past year. And I also look forward to the results from Red Bike that are required as part of this agreement, the pilots, the integrations with the stops, the first mile, last mile solutions, and the potential future in smart regions, smart cities style development for our transit system and, and our communities. All right, so we have two more items, and it is getting late. Approval of contract for excess workers' compensation. This is part of finance. Mr. Walker?
I'll take that one. Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. Yeah, this is a, a standard renewal of our excess workers' compensation with assured partners. The highlights here, the quote came in as not to exceed of about $139,000. It was $119,000 last year. Primarily, the increase was due to the salaries and wages increasing from year to year. The rate increased from 0.18% to 0.1818%, so basically a flat rate. It's really just the wages, the dollar wages we had. That's really all I have.
Somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded. I think this is a roll call.
Ms. Amott?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
And our final item requiring a vote is the Everybody, Everybody Rides Metro Administrative Update. We've discussed this over the past year and a half, the transformation of the ERM, its organization. Andy, did you want to give a small update on that and what we're doing here?
I can do that. If you all recall, about a year ago, based on some of the accounting rules and, and looking at it through a legal lens, Metro stopped contributing to the ERM program through the 501(c)(3) body, that was the ERM nonprofit. In 2024, the ERM program was funded directly out of the Metro budget, so essentially, all the nonprofits that apply for membership in ERM apply. Once they're deemed eligible, they purchase passes, and then those passes are reimbursed at 50%. That is essentially the Everybody Rides Metro program. There are 99 nonprofits that participate, over 90 nonprofits that participate in the program. The SORTA board has not, again, has been funding that directly out of the SORTA expense line budget. And you saw in the 2025 budget, there is a line item in there for the ERM program. You may have seen in Tim's wall of numbers, on every financial statement, you will see the ERM contribution and/or expenses, right? We brought this issue to the ERM board in November, we've been talking about it for a year, and we asked them, we said, do you want to maintain the 501(c)(3), even though there's no longer any money going through the 501(c)(3), or do you want to transition into a committee, the Everybody Rides Metro Committee, the membership of which would be identical to the membership today? The function would be identical to today, but we would, it would give us the opportunity to close the 501(c)(3), which would allow us not to do all the reporting and all of those things, and all the administrative burden of carrying a nonprofit when there was no money going into the nonprofit. The question, we had a long discussion about this, we've had over the last 12 months. One of the discussions was, well, what if, out of the blue, some, we, again, this, this nonprofit's been operating for years, what if out of the blue, somebody wanted to put money into the 501(c)(3)? Well, we have nine, over 90 nonprofit partners that would be happy to receive that money as a nonprofit holder and facilitate the spending of it under the program. So really, this is an administrative back office change. We brought this issue to the ERM board on November 21st. They took a vote, and they voted to recommend to this board that they So really, this is an administrative back office change. We brought this issue to the ERM Board on November 21st. They took a vote and they voted to recommend to this board that they disband the 501(c)(3 and turn themselves into an advisory committee of this board. So that was their vote on November 21st. We told them that we would bring that information to you all. And if you felt like that was agreeable, this board could act. And then essentially saying at the end of 2024, after we do all the year-end filings, we could close the 501(c)(3. But continue the program.
Was there any dissent on that board?
There was. There was, it was, there were a couple of folks who thought that, and I don't want to speak for the board. I know Brandy was there as well, some others. The, it was just this, maybe in the future, it might, it might service, you know, some good. But at the end of the day, it was a pretty amicable conversation. And, and I think the vote was, I don't remember the number specifically, but I think there were two folks on, on the board who dissented.
So Pete, I'm on the board. I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I support the motion as Andy's outlined it. And we've been talking about this for about 12 months. This just, it almost has to happen. So, so that's how I would look at it. I'd be happy to put a motion forward to make this change.
Just to clarify, Dave, you'll continue to serve on that committee?
Yes.
Okay.
I was sick that day. I did not know Dan wasn't there. I also wasn't there. We're doing great, you and I representing Sorda. No, so I, like, yeah, I'm in support of this, but I have no inkblot of chair as to what happened at that ERM meeting. So I apologize.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Microphone.
Neil, would you like to second it?
Neil, would you like to second the motion? Properly moved and seconded. This is a roll call.
Ms. Amott? Mr. Bryce? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Thank you very much. That closes all the established business. I have one item, part of new business, just to address. Does anybody else have anything they want to move forward? Well, this is, this is more, it's not a motion or anything. We, I think you should all have received a letter or a copy of a letter, is that right, from Colrain Township? And I was very impressed with the letter, the detail, the thought that went into it regarding our infrastructure program. And we are actually already in process evaluating the program from the past year and past years. Are diligently working on that. I know Ms. Sheets has led several meetings over the past several weeks along these lines. And I would like that we consider all the points made in this letter from the trustees of Colrain Township, trustees, yes. As we move forward, you will see that we'll have a meeting on infrastructure in January. And I think it should be a very interesting one, thorough discussion on this important project that's part of Metro. That's all. So the, the request here is that we do consider all the points in this very thoughtful and well-written letter. All right, nothing else? I think we can adjourn. Thank you for sticking through the whole night. And there probably is a little bit of food left.